July 8th, Hudson Board of Education Regular Meeting. We'll start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, further into the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Board members have the agenda in front of them, and I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Motion by Brian. Do we have a second? Second by Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Next item is the Student Recognition. WIAA Scholar-Athlete Katie Cummings, I believe is not here today, but Sandy, do you want to, do you have some comments?
Sure, we still want to recognize Katie for outstanding accomplishments. There were thirty-two Wisconsin seniors that were named winners of the 2008 WIAA Scholar-Athlete Award, and that is presented by the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association, and this is the twenty-fifth year of the program. This year's sixteen boys and sixteen girls were recognized at an award ceremony in Wausau last month, and to earn the award, students must be nominated by a WIAA member high school, must have earned at least four varsity letters through the first half of their senior year, and must have a cumulative grade point of at least three point oh on a four point oh scale. And we're just very excited that Katie received this award. In Division One, there were four girls and four boys named, and Katie Cummings of Hudson is one of those four girls. Congratulations, Katie.
That's great, and again, congratulations, Katie, for that honor. We'll move on to comments to Board of Education from Aaron Legatus, Ben Lures, and Peter Mackey. I think if we take one at a time, if you, I can't see you guys, but if you could stand up, state your name, and, and...
I'm Aaron Legatus.
Okay. Is there, is there a microphone?
Yes, there is.
I'm Aaron Legatus. I would just like to say I'm sorry for what I did last June. I've learned a lot from it, learned to take responsibility for it, and I'm doing everything to get it cleared next March. I've started my community service, and I'm doing this. I wrote my letter to the paper, and I'm trying to be as good as I can.
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Is Ben, Ben here?
Hi, my name is Ben Lures. First, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to apologize for my actions. I'm really sorry that I was even involved in anything. The Hudson School District has done a lot for me through the eighteen years of high school and schooling, and it was very disrespectful, and I'm really sorry, and I hope we can turn a corner, and I can make up for it.
Okay, thanks, Ben. And Peter?
I'm Peter Mackey. I'd like to just say I'm sorry for this decision and my actions in June. They don't represent my character very well, and thank you for the opportunity to apologize for this.
Okay, thanks, Peter. As, as we, as I mentioned at the last board meeting when some of the other students got up and spoke, you know, this certainly created a hardship for the school district, and in a way tarnished our reputation as a school district. We've had to do quite a bit to work with our neighboring school districts in trying to, you know, bring the honor and reputation back to Hudson. So certainly, your efforts in helping us achieve that would be welcome, and more importantly, through the mistakes that have been made, hopefully you've learned through them, and you all are, you know, great, great kids and have enormous potential. So it's, again, I hope you've learned a lot from this and can, as you and a kid, turn the corner and complete your educational career as well as going on to something bigger and better. So good luck.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you.
The next item is approval of the June tenth, two thousand eight Regular Enclosed Session Board of Education Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion for their approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. I believe we have some correspondence, Tom?
Yes, we have three items of correspondence, two thank you cards, and one letter of concern. The thank you cards are coming from, the first one from Monica, Monica Bulle, B-U-L-L-E, Bull, Bulla, Transportation Specialist, grateful for the, the, our thoughts and considerable gift during her recovery. She had eye surgery. Carl Minky sent a letter of thanks for the peace lily that we sent as a board on behalf of his father's funeral. Carl is a music teacher at the middle school, and we received a letter from Linda Hanch today, dated yesterday, actually, just expressing concern about class sizes at the Rivercrest Elementary School that we'll be hearing about more tonight, and encouraging us to take that into consideration, to keep it at the levels that we have determined as far as policy of sizes of classes. She has two students in second and fourth grade at the Rivercrest Elementary School, is encouraging us to hire staff, or I think probably do whatever is necessary to keep it at the levels that we've appointed, so...
Thanks, Tom. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. We have two items, the Athletic Director Selection and the Rivercrest Sustainability Highlights. Mary?
We have completed our selection process for the Athletic Director, and thanks to the Hudson Star Observer, they did a very informative job of highlighting Stephanie DeVos's accomplishments. But I do want to take the time to just reiterate that for anyone who hasn't had that opportunity to read that article. Our selection process included fifty-seven applicants, candidates for the position, and they were both internal and external candidates. The finalists went through three interviews and reference checks. The selection committee itself was comprised of community members, coaches, high school, middle school, and district administrators. So we're very pleased to recommend Stephanie DeVos to you this evening, and she is included on your personnel list that you're taking action on later. She currently has been the Athletic Activities Director for grades seven through twelve in Adele, Iowa, and it's a Des Moines suburb. She's experienced as an athlete herself, a coach, and athletic director. As an athlete, she earned varsity letters in four sports. She played college basketball and also professional basketball. Her coaching experience extends to basketball, tennis, volleyball, track, and softball. She's coached at both the middle school and the high school levels, and both boys' and girls' teams. She was named Coach of the Year four times, and twice named as an All-Star Coach. She was inducted into the Grandview College Hall of Fame in two thousand and three, and named Iowa Athletic Director Administrator of the Year in two thousand and four. She's active in state organizations in Iowa, athletic organizations. She has been, just recently, the Junior Director of the Central Iowa Athletic Directors Association and President of the Raccoon River Conference. She served as Vice President, President and Secretary of the Central Iowa Athletic Directors Association. Stephanie is credited with a number of accomplishments, but certainly the references we talked to told us about how she has developed Adele's athletic program into a strong competitive program. She changed a deficit budget into a surplus. She led successful fundraising efforts. She's developed strong relationships and support with booster clubs, and she created a Hall of Fame that is quite notable because it recognized student accomplishments at the high school, and it wasn't just athletes, it was all students. She created a student ambassador program at Adele that, students who come and welcome visiting teams that come to Adele. The interview team found Stephanie to be humble when speaking about her own accomplishments, but we found her also to be passionate when she spoke about all students and student athletes. Stephanie's, certainly her credentials speak for themselves. She's highly successful and an experienced athletic director, and Principal Ed Lucas and Principal Dan Koch are looking forward to her contributions, as the rest of us are, to further develop our athletic program.
Okay, thank you, Mary. And she, Stephanie's not here?
No, she isn't. She is in Iowa, but she will be starting soon, so we expect her to be on board in the next week or two.
Okay. Well, we certainly welcome Stephanie to the Hudson School District. Thank you.
All right, I'll move on to Rivercrest and some more sustainable information about that school. I'm going to focus now on the site design and just highlight some of the features of the site design. First of all, the building orientation maximizes light transmission into the classrooms to reduce energy consumption. The building location where it's centered on the site preserves much of the site in its natural state to protect wildlife habitat. Erosion control measures have occurred during construction, and you'll, you know, we have all noticed that grass was planted very early in the project on the playfields, and is coming up now for the second year with that kind of planning and erosion maintenance. Long-term erosion control includes native plantings and providing stormwater basins on-site. Much of the landscaping has been completed with native grasses that are drought-resistant and require little maintenance, and we have purposely chosen to minimize the need for landscape irrigation on the site, so there is no irrigation on the site. Refrigerants and other compounds that contain ozone-depleting substances have been minimized or eliminated. We have priority parking spaces that are reserved for hybrid or high-efficiency vehicles, and we also have spaces for carpooling. Bus ridership, well, in fact, we have a carpooling plan that you've seen earlier that we will be supporting. Bus ridership will be encouraged, and that carpooling plan will, both of those features really reduce carbon emissions. A walking trail of a little less than a mile in length surrounds the site, certainly will be used by students and staff and also community members for health and fitness and also nature study and certainly enjoyment. I've been asked many times about the LEED certification process, why we selected to go through that process, and I just wanted to share some information with you as I was looking on the U.S. Green Building Council site, and they actually track LEED initiatives for government buildings and schools. And although there are very few projects in Wisconsin, school projects in Wisconsin that have gone through the LEED certification up to this point, there are a number of actions that support LEED certification throughout the country. And for example, there's been state legislation, and I'm just going to name a few, in Florida, in June of two thousand and eight, a new law was enacted requiring new construction and renovation of schools and state buildings to follow LEED guidelines or other green building rating systems. In Maryland, in April of two thousand and eight, a new law requires that all public construction and major renovation earn LEED Silver Certification or two Green Globes, which is another green certification in process. Oklahoma, Hawaii have similar legislations, and I could go on and on. In fact, they're all listed in this document that has some depth and length to it. Wisconsin has had some legislation, I believe in two thousand and six, but it does not go to this extent at the present time and doesn't really affect school buildings. So our decision to go through that LEED certification process, I think, has really been worthwhile. It certainly is creating a building that is good for the environment, good for the people that are going to be in and use that building, and certainly saves operating costs for the future for our community.
Okay. Thank you, Mary, for that report. We'll move on to additional reports. Sandy is going to speak to the WKCE and the NWEA test results. Sandy?
And in your additional information, you should have found two additional pages of charts, so I just want to make sure that you include those as well. Good evening. Tonight's testing report highlights two of our large-scale assessments administered by the district, the Wisconsin Knowledge and Concepts Exams and the Measures of Academic Progress. The WKCEs are given annually in the fall of each year, with results not coming to us until spring. The MAP tests are given both in the fall and spring at the elementary level and in the spring at the secondary level, grades six through nine. DPI documents tell us that the WKCE is designed to provide a snapshot of how well a district or school is doing to help all students reach proficiency on state standards. A large-scale summative assessment such as the WKCE is not designed to provide diagnostic information about individual students. Even though we send home, we receive individual reports and send them home, that is not the purpose of the test, that's not how it was designed. Those assessments are best done at the local level, and next month you will hear an update on Building Smart Goals, and that will include data on assessments more closely linked to student learning. These types of formative and benchmark assessments provide the information we need for teachers to guide their instruction. No Child Left Behind requires all states to develop and administer tests in reading and mathematics for all students in every grade three through eight, and at least once in these subjects in grades nine through twelve. The stated goal of No Child Left Behind is to have all children one hundred percent score at the highest two levels of achievement, proficient or advanced, on statewide tests by school year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. To report the progress of individual schools and districts toward the goal of one hundred percent proficiency, No Child Left Behind uses a measure known as Adequate Yearly Progress. Each year, schools receive a report from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction showing their AYP reading status. The report includes information about attendance, graduation, test participation, and district and individual school scores on the state in reading and math tests. For Fall two thousand and seven, you can see the criteria in Wisconsin for meeting the Adequate Yearly Progress goal included. Seventy-four percent of all students tested must be proficient, proficient or advanced in reading. Fifty-eight percent of all students tested must be proficient or advanced in math. Ninety-five percent of all students enrolled in tested grade levels must participate in the state test. Elementary and middle school attendance rates must be at least eighty-five percent, and high school graduation rate must be at least eighty percent. And you can see on that second chart then that Hudson made AYP in all areas once again. The AYP report breaks down student scores into different subgroups, including race, ethnicity, students with disabilities, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged. In addition to each tested grade reaching proficiency, each subgroup of tested students must also demonstrate movement toward a hundred percent proficiency rating. The five AYP criteria I just mentioned apply to all students as well as all subgroups of students. A forty student minimum is required to form a group for the five No Child Left Behind criteria to be applied to them. However, with districts now testing at every grade level, the number of students in each subgroup will be totaled at the elementary level, grades three through five, and the middle levels, grades six to eight, to determine whether each subgroup of students also meets the five criteria listed above. And so we qualify with that forty in those subgroup areas. Schools will be identified for improvement when the same subgroup of students misses the same criterion for two consecutive years. And I have to also state, as I've stated in the past testing reports, the concept of No Child Left Behind is very good. I mean, it's solid, what they're trying to do, reach, raise the proficiency of all students, but the implementation is what is faulty when you consider that all subgroups are going to try to reach that one hundred percent. And the faulty part really is in that implementation piece, as well as there was no research done, there was no small group project or action research done to show that this kind of plan is successful. There's no proof that it will work. State and federal law require the annual review of school performance to determine if student achievement and progress is adequate. The review includes a comparison of actual achievement levels of students in reading and mathematics and Wisconsin's annual measurable objectives in these areas. The annual measurable objectives, as you can see in this chart, increase over time. This is the percent of students who need to score at proficient or advanced to meet AYP. You can also see that this year, in two thousand and seven oh eight, we took a jump. As, as I said, we needed to have seventy-four percent of our students proficient or advanced in reading and fifty-eight percent in mathematics, and it stays that way for three years and then jumps up again. Each subject and grade level was calculated separately by a panel of experts. Therefore, the test cut scores are not equal across subject areas and grade levels, and that's why you see those differences, especially between reading and math. This could make it appear that students are doing poorly in a subject area when, in fact, they know the same amount of knowledge as in other subjects, but the score necessary to attain proficiency is set much higher than other subjects. So between tests from reading to math to science to social studies, different cut scores because they're different tests, then by grade level, the cut scores were determined independently. So it makes it a little difficult to really do some analysis. As we look at this year's data, we're going to begin by looking at Hudson schools compared to the state to give us kind of a ground point here. And we can see that in both reading and math, Hudson is above the state average in every grade level tested. And this kind of gives you a visual of what I just was mentioning, in that you could look at like grades three or perhaps especially grade ten and go, wow, what's going on with grade ten, they're not performing as well. Their cut score most likely is at a different level, and so they're performing fine. When I talked to someone at DPI, he said to really look at that difference, and if we look at the difference in tenth grade, I think I just did this by pencil, there is a twelve point four percent difference between the state and the district in grade ten in reading and a fifteen point nine percent spread between the state and the district in math. So that's, that, he said, is what we need to look at, and that that's a strong performance. And there it is in mathematics. Now, what we want to do from here, once we kind of get this and go, okay, slap, you know, pat ourselves on the back, we're above the state average, then what we want to do is to kind of look at the data at different angles, a variety of angles, just to see if anything pops up at us as far as an area of concern or an area of need. So the first place we went is to look at reading and mathematics trend data, meaning that we're looking at over grade levels. So now we finally have three years of data, it's a three-year-old test, so we're showing you grade three in two thousand and five, grade three in two thousand and six, grade three in two thousand and seven. And again, you can see that overall, things are quite stable as we go through. A little bump in grade four and five this year in reading. We look at mathematics, pretty much the same thing. We're comparing, this has not been apples to apples because you're comparing different kids over time, but we're trying to see if overall our kids are sustaining from year to year in the same grade levels. Then we wanted to look at the data longitudinally. So now we're looking at the fact, if I'm looking at the graduating class of two thousand and fifteen, that is our current fifth graders. So rolling back, this is showing what they had scored in advanced and proficient in their third grade year, their fourth grade year, and their fifth grade year. And the same thing then with like twenty twelve would be eighth graders, their sixth grade year, their seventh grade year, their eighth grade year. Now, it looks like our fifth graders did something like stupendous as far as that little blip in the radar there, jumping up to ninety-six point one, but when I look across, and when principals and I have discussed some of this, when we look across, it looks more like it's balancing out of what should have happened perhaps last year, in that we were probably lower than we should have been last year when they were fourth graders, and now it's just kind of balancing itself out with what should be happening in fifth grade. And we'll watch that as it moves forward into the next few years. And then again, in mathematics, the same kind of thing. Again, what we want to try to see really is what we see in two thousand and fifteen with this year's fifth graders. If, if the test is what they had hoped to do is to try to make it linked from grade to grade a little bit, you want to see that kind of step action happening. And we have it going on a little bit. We had some substantial increases that second year, so it's almost like it's kind of balancing out a little bit. But what we want to start seeing over time is a little bit more of that step ladder that's happening with our current fifth graders, the graduating class of two thousand and fifteen. Now, the other piece that we have started the last three years is benchmarking with some of the high-performing districts in the state. And when we went out selecting, if you go out, if I click on the wins site, which is off of DPI, and say I want comparable districts, it will look for districts who are scoring at the ninetieth percentile or above for us, because that is a very high starting point statistically. But what it pulls up are districts that might have twelve third graders, eighteen fifth graders, not comparable. So the districts we've selected are pretty much in our mid-sized category of districts throughout the state, and more than anything, they're some of the highest-performing mid-sized districts, suburban-type districts that we want to compare ourselves to. And I think what it shows in the next few slides again is if we just showed you the half of the slide where we're comparing ourselves with advanced and proficient, you know, we're looking like we're playing right with the high-performing districts in the state. You know, Hudson is one of the high-performing districts in the state. But what we're trying to show and encourage our staff and teachers and principals is to now look at just advanced and what those students are able to do in just the advanced category. And that's where we want some of those SMART goals and some of our professional development to really stretch those kids. Our students are capable of having more into that advanced category. So you can see in grade four reading, followed by grade seven math, again, when we look at advanced and proficient, we're right there with them. But then again, when we look at just the advanced category and the percentage they have there, that's where our work is going to be, how to keep moving that top while actually moving the whole bell up and to the right. And then again, grade ten mathematics. And again, when we look, we sometimes think, oh, our tenth graders aren't performing where they need to be. We look at the high-performing districts, we're right there, it's that area pushing them up into those advanced categories again. A new category I want to bring out this year is looking at the results of the writing test, and I want to do this because there's a direct correlation to some of the professional development we're currently doing. Our teachers in grades three, four, five have just completed two years of professional development specifically in writing workshop, and Arcade Two has just completed one year. And you can see that in two thousand and five, we kind of had, that's the blue line, you can kind of see, we had sort of a traditional bell-shaped curve, and now we are starting to move that bell to the right, and that's what we want to see happen. So in Fall two thousand and five, there were no students that scored above six points out of a nine-point scale. In Fall two thousand and six, there were five students that scored six point five to seven, and in Fall two thousand and seven, there were seven students that scored six point five to seven points. So the link is showing us, at least this initial piece with two years out, is that our professional development in the area of writing is making a difference. The other large-scale assessment used in our schools is NWA's Measures of Academic Progress, or what we call MAP tests. The MAP test measures student progress or growth in school. You may have, or you have had, a chart in your home on which your child's height at certain times is marked, and this is a growth chart, especially, I would think, like Lynn's children and Brian's, the ages, you're trying to show first grade, where were you, second grade, and so on as they, as they grow. Measures of Academic Progress are what we call MAP tests. Measures of Academic Progress does the same thing, except it measures student growth in reading, language usage, and math skills. And this is why it's such a popular test throughout the country. The strength of this test is it kind of gives you a blend of two. It gives us that large-scale summative, we only do it once or twice a year, but the students take the test on a computer, and then the results are available back to our teachers within twenty-four hours. So we can use it as a large-scale summative assessment, we can also use it to guide instruction for teachers in the classroom. And the other piece I also want to point out is this is the only test then that we use that provides us with national comparative data. Now, the test is intended to show growth over time, so the data I'm showing this evening shows cohort data. So again, we're looking like at 2015 is our current fifth grader, so that's going back to see the results from when they took the test in third grade, in fourth grade, then in fifth grade. And if you kind of just watch that step action again, you can see that the first bar in 2015 is where the national norm is at, then Hudson, that was for 2006, then spring 2007, national to district, 2008, district and national. So we're always, again, above the national average according to the MAP test. And here is reading, and then followed by mathematics. And now what I added, because I can see that, you know, I can see that this has a lot of information, but if I pull out the national norm and just look at reading again, this is what we want to see. We want to see that kind of step action. This is showing that our students are making growth over time from grade level to grade level. So this is pretty exciting to see, that we are definitely doing what we need to do from grade level to grade level. This is reading, and then followed by mathematics. Now, with any assessments, especially these large scales, it's important to remember, especially with that WKCE, that it's only one of many tools that schools should use to evaluate the performance of students. The WKC should not be used as the only indicator determining whether a student needs remediation or enrichment or advancement. A child's day-to-day progress in the classroom is a better measure of his or her academic growth than performance on a one-day-in-time test. Hudson Schools is currently working to create a system that includes a variety of formative and summative assessments. Elementary teachers are administering a reading assessment to students to assist in diagnosing individual needs and to drive their instruction. Middle school teachers continue their work on assessment and the development of common assessments. On June 17th, just this past month, the district held its first district-wide school improvement work session. SMART teams from across the district met to review their SMART goals, examined a ride of data, such as what we have here tonight, and then began their dialogue on SMART goals for 2008, 2009. And as I mentioned, that information will be coming in at the August board meeting. And I'd just like to close with the quote that I actually just found today. Improvement is not achieved by focusing on results, but by focusing on improving the systems that create the results. And that's where Hudson is truly headed. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Sandy. That's good, good information, and it looks like Hudson's moving in the right direction, so, so thank you. Board members have questions, comments?
I did have one, actually, two questions for you, Sandy. One is, I love all this information. I recognize that sometimes it's hard to tell a clear story with graphs, so your voiceover was very helpful tonight. On the graph on the fourth grade writing trend data, I missed this point. Is this part of the WKCE, Sandy, or is this a district assessment that we do?
Oh, good point. This is a WKCE. It only happens, though, in grades four, eight, and now I say ten, but I'm not even a hundred percent. Four and eight, I'm pretty sure.
All right.
I might have to get back to you on that one.
Thank you. And then you had commented in the subgroups that because they, the measurement of having a minimum of forty students in a subgroup is measured at an elementary level, and that we do have certain of these categories where we meet those criteria, I would be interested in seeing any of this data that you have for any of our subgroups, and to try and see whether or not there are differences or unique things that are going on in some of those subgroups.
Okay. Good.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Barb. Any other questions, board members? Lynn?
Sandy, I have a question. Can you clarify again what the distinction is between advanced and proficient and advanced?
The cut score is different, but the state comes out with the four categories of minimal, basic, proficient, and advanced. So wherever they have that cut score, the advanced is that very top-performing students as far as measured against state standards. So they are pretty much, in the most part, performing at or above grade-level standard work.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandy, just a general question. You know, when you look at, you know, where we've been putting some resources, professional development, towards, you know, improving our reading skills and, you know, changes in curriculums, did anything surprise you in terms of these results? Did you sense that, you know, what's showing up here is sort of tracking where we're putting, you know?
Being that I saw some changes in the writing, and we've just finished that piece, now the training for reading workshop begins this fall. And so then we'll let, you know, give that a couple of years to roll up, and hopefully we see some of the same things happen there. We have the everyday mathematics, which focuses a lot on mathematical concepts, and when we look at some of the strand data, it's sort of the same thing. We're seeing that that strand is strengthening as it rolls on up.
Okay. Mary?
I'd just like to add to that. When you look at the WKCE, it really isn't a test that from year to year responds to an improvement in instruction. What you see is a trend over time. And because we're at such a high level on that right now, what you would expect is the trend is going to be anywhere from five to ten years that we'll start seeing that trend change, this data. It is very difficult to increase your percentage when you're already in the nineties. Once you get there, I mean, that's where I believe we should be over time in every content area and at every grade level. We're very close, certainly. But over time, with the kind of improvement, best practices that we're implementing, the investment that the board is making in very high-quality staff development, that's where we'll see that. Now, that writing trend data is much different. It is individual writing, it isn't a standardized test, it is scored individually, and so it is a different kind of assessment, and it doesn't respond the same way as the rest of the WKCE. Although at the state level, it does look like the normal bell curve, and this is quite impressive to actually show that, we would assume, as a result of the investment of the high-quality professional development that is occurring at elementary, that we see this trend data for two years. That's very unusual for districts to see. So, you know, I really compliment Sandy and certainly PEG and the work that they've been doing with our teachers and certainly our teachers in the classroom, and changing their practices so that our students are learning to write in a way that we have not experienced before, at a level we haven't experienced before. And so this is, it's great to see it show up this early.
Sandy, can you talk a little bit about the kind of adjustments that are made in curriculum, or, you know, increasing the level or the intensity? Because we have such high accomplishment, my only concern would be that we're not challenging them enough, things like that.
And some of that is what we're talking about as far as creating that system, because now when we start, like, I'm going to use the reading piece as the example. Lots of good instruction currently going on in reading, so now, kind of what changes are we going to make? We're going to actually do more with, one would be the reading assessment. First, second, and third grade administer the reading assessment in fall and spring. We just trained three, four, five just this year. Now, this coming year, again, they'll be using that assessment in the fall, actually for below-grade-level readers in the winter, and then again in the spring. And those assessments help the teachers really diagnose specific things they need to work on with students. And then with the reading workshop training, we also make sure that then students are reading at what we call at their just-right level. And so some of those just little, what I call like little tweaks in the system, make sure that every student then is reading at their particular just-right level, and that the teachers then are meeting with grade levels, talking about kids who are struggling, what interventions are they putting in place, what else can we try? You're just seeing a lot more of those discussions going on with both the intervention side and then some of the SMART goal work as well, watching those kids.
So it's more of a personalized, customized approach to trying to provide for individual students where they're at?
Correct.
And moving them?
Moving them up, moving everybody up.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, Sandy. Appreciate the report, the good news. Okay, we'll move on to item 9B, six-twelve space for learning. Mary?
Well, I'm going to get us started, and then I'm going to turn it over to Associate Principal Jim Delune from the middle school. And so if, Jim, you want to come on up as I get us started and set the stage for this. As you know, the board has been studying three different areas, looking at six-twelve space for learning. We have looked at projected enrollments at both middle school and high school. We have turned our attention now to program concerns and challenges at both the middle school and high school, and then we will also look at, in the future, physical plant assessment. Last month, in June, we focused on the high school and looking at program concerns and challenges that presently exist and those that we might anticipate in the future as we move into further implementation of HSD 2025, and also as more of our students, as our projected enrollments continue to increase. So with that in mind, we're going to focus on the middle school this evening and give you an overview of that, and then answer any questions that you have. Just to get us started, certainly the middle school was constructed in 1994, and we've actually made four remodels or additions, and that includes the one that's going on this summer. So a number of modifications have been made, and essentially those modifications have been made to accommodate additional students and additional programming. And so as we continue to experience that increase in population and look forward to HSD 2025, we are going to focus on that this evening and look at the program concerns and challenges that we currently have and that we anticipate into the near future. So Jim, I'm going to let you get us started, and appreciate you being here.
All right. Well, first of all, let me just thank you for letting me pinch-hit for Mr. Koch. He truly regrets not being able to be here. He's had, for the past several months, a fly-in fishing trip with his son planned and couldn't get back from Canada in time. I want to start by saying, the middle school is going on its fifteenth year of operation, and it has served the community well. The design has served the community well. For all intents and purposes, we're a large middle school, but it doesn't feel that way. When our kids come in and they're in their house and they have their core set of teachers with their core house group, it's a small building, and it feels small to them, and they're allowed to have those personal relationships, and it really has worked well. But as we continue our enrollment growth, past capacity, it can provide increasing challenges for us as we look to the future. We've made some modifications and adjustments already, but some more are going to be needed. And unfortunately, right now, with some of the adjustments we've made, it's starting to chip away a little bit at our middle school concept. We have added an additional sixth and seventh grade science teacher, and an additional sixth and seventh grade world studies teacher. And those teachers, because of space concerns, need to bring kids out of their house area to a separate area in order to provide instruction. And that, again, begins to enlarge the school for the kids and break down that philosophy of that school within a school, that base unit for them. So I'll just kind of walk you through the documents that we have here. If you have any questions, stop me at any time. Don't hold until the end, we'll adjust them as we go. First of all, just general classroom areas, there's not enough classroom for existing staff. We currently have eleven staff members on carts, traveling from room to room. That's the same number for next school year that we'll have, though we have found a permanent home for two teachers this year by relocating our occupational therapy, physical therapy room. We have two more additional staff members who will be on carts this year, so we're going to still be at eleven. Those traveling teachers lose some time with the kids as they break down and they set up each hour. And so we just, we need more classroom space. When you look at our core facilities, the first thing we have listed there is the media center, and it's just undersized for our current student population. When you look at the facility, the facility was originally designed with a conference room, with a storage facilities, with office space that have now been repurposed. There is a reading specialist, literacy coach, who has taken up space in the media center. There is a special education classroom that has taken up space in what was a small conference area, storage area in the media center, and we've lost those spaces. Not enough space for small groups to be in there. Well, classes have taken up the facility for research, for whatever they may be doing. So it's just undersized. There's one hard-wired computer lab that belongs with the media center for our entire student population, and that is inadequate. You take a look at the cafeteria, there are three lunch sessions, each at capacity. The cafeteria did have a small addition back when the pool was put on, but since the beginning of the operation to the middle school, the servery, which is the area where the kids receive the food, have moved out of the servery and into the cafeteria area. So they have taken up some of our square footage. We've added as many tables as we can. There's no more room to add tables, they're packed in there pretty tightly. And they're kids, they're middle school kids. And so when they're in there and they're shoulder to shoulder eating, that can at times create some higher anxiety for some kids who would like some more space. And so, and we've seen some of that. The cafeteria is also used for our orchestra, two periods a day. The orchestra is in there as a classroom space, as an instruction space. It is inadequate for our orchestra. We use it for large group testing, and we have given up that space for the first two periods of the day to Hudson Prairie for their school, before-school-age care program, and we'll mention it later. We have moved into the Hudson Prairie FIED space the first two hours a day to help alleviate some of our instructional space concerns for FIED. Which brings us to the gymnasium. The original plans for the middle school included two full gyms. Throughout the process of the referendum and the building of the middle school, one of those gymnasiums was cut out. And so that has never been addressed in the fourteen years that the building's been in operation. So we're still missing that space. So the best we can do is to divide the gymnasium in half and have two instructional spaces, utilizing that along with the multi-purpose room, it gives us three instructional spaces. For the first two hours of the day, we have four classes scheduled into FIED. We have two seventh-grade FIED classes and two eighth-grade FIED classes, which puts us four into three. In the fall and the spring, when the weather cooperates, that's not a problem. With the use of Hudson Prairie, that has become better, but it's still, it's inadequate. And when we do have large group programs, they're displaced, and that's something that we roll with. The weight room, I don't know how many of you have been through the middle school and taken a look at the weight room, it's about a twenty-by-twenty room. It's not large enough to accommodate a class, a classroom full of students with an instructor and the proper supervision. So when they do utilize the weight room, it's, kids are split up, which means that some kids aren't participating, some kids aren't active, they're not, and they're not in there working out with the kids. With the, you know, life skills outcomes that we have focused in Hudson 2025, we're going to need a space, a weight room space that is adequate for, you know, the kids and the instruction that we want to occur. Right now, it is undersized. Next, we have the multi-purpose room. The multi-purpose room is a great room, a great area, and that name really truly fits it. It can be used for many things, and we do use it for many things. It currently is a FIED instructional station, a very difficult instructional station for two periods of the day when we have seventh and eighth grade lunch and sixth grade is in there. They do use it, but it's very difficult for the direct instruction because of the noise and the chaos that happens when you have three-hundred-and-seventy-five kids coming down for lunch and lining up for lunch in the hallways. But it is utilized, and our staff does a great job of making it work. We are repurposing the staging area this year to We are repurposing the staging area this year to utilize that space in a more efficient manner for the building. So we're going to lose a bit of square footage there also. Our office areas, our meeting space, our conference space, I think the number one thing we have listed there is we have one conference room in the entire building. The building was originally designed with four conference rooms. One is now an office, one is used for our in-school suspension and one is a special education classroom. And so we now have one conference room that was added on. I'll take that back, no, it was not added on. It was, it's still intact from when the office additions took place. That conference room is in high demand with the special education programs that we have, the individual educational plans that need to have conferences. It is utilized consistently, which puts some of our pupil service support at a, kind of handicaps them. You know, we would like to have groups for our kids. At the middle school level, the support piece is tremendously huge for them. Whether it be, you know, split families, whether it be a grief and loss group, lots of different groups that we have, friendship groups, you know, they're still kids. And those groups are important to what our guidance staff does. And they have a hard time meeting with a large group of kids without a conference room. And that conference room again is at a premium. It's usually signed out many, many weeks in advance. We have no staff lunch room. The pupil services area has a couple of offices that are undersized. You can meet with one, maybe two kids in there, but if you're working through some conflict resolution with a group of students, which is not unheard of at the middle level, getting a group of students in one counselor's office and trying to work through those things is difficult with the space that they have. In our main office area, one of our concerns and something that Mr. Koch and Mrs. Franklin and I talk about a lot is that we have three secretaries out in the same area, occupying the same area. So when parents come in and they're having conversations about their students, there's a parent three feet away or two feet away from another parent having a conversation about their student. And oftentimes those conversations overlap and sometimes that's, can be embarrassing or just information that shouldn't be overlapped. Storage space, and this is nothing new. We are out of storage space. We are in every nook and cranny in the building. We're utilizing everything as best as we can, but we do need more storage space. We have a wonderful interdisciplinary unit in eighth grade called Wild West Days, where it really utilizes the middle school philosophy for what it is. Different teachers in the house work together around a unit and gear their instruction around a theme and then they have a cumulating activity that goes with it. The props, you wouldn't believe. Come on down, it's May 1st next year, Friday. It's a marvelous, marvelous cumulating activity, but there are Wild West props everywhere in the middle school. They put fake facades up over every room. They have a jail and a pharmacy and a drugstore and it's neat, but we're out of storage space. The custodians also need some room for routine maintenance. You know, to bring items that need maintenance. Their areas also lacking. Lockers, we were fortunate enough this year to purchase some new lockers, which will allow us to have lockers for all of our students. Last year, unfortunately, we did not have lockers for all of our students. But with the addition of those lockers, we're going to be losing valuable house space. And when, I know all of you have been through our building, when you walk through our building, you see that house space utilized. You see it utilized by a full class, by numerous classes working together, by group work, group activity. And those additional lockers are going to be eating up some of that space that is utilized on a regular basis. Then we have our site circulation. Morning drop off, when we have buses dropping off, we have parents dropping off, we have kids coming in and out of buses. It's something that needs to be addressed. The content areas, one of the things you're going to see regularly as we go through the content areas is inadequate technology will be a concern for all of them. From basic general computer access to enough classroom space to utilize some of the newer technologies that are out there, whether it be family and consumer science, engineering, robotics. Just having the space to take advantage of what is out there right now for our kids is going to be a problem. Language arts, our increased class sizes reduces the opportunity for students to speak, opportunity for students to give feedback, limits their writing opportunities. The same for math. You know, again, it's opportunities for kids to be engaged, to participate, the larger the class sizes get. Social studies, one of our goals in HSD 2025 is that global connections and becoming, you know, one with the world, because it is a world that we live in and it's a shrinking world. To make those connections, we're going to need to have access to some of the more technology, some of the updated technology. And we're going to have to have the space to support that. We currently have one teacher who has no assigned classroom, moves from room to room on a cart, teaching a core class. And that begins to really diminish our house concept. Taking kids from one house such as Raider Blue and bringing them over to another house for that world studies class with a teacher who's on a cart, who is starting, you know, class after the bell rings, trying to pack up and get to the next class so they can be there for supervision. It really is starting to be noticeable within the building. Science, we also have a teacher on a cart in science. With the lab work that that entails, with the group work that that entails, the scientific method, it is, it is not as efficient as it needs to be. We need smaller class sizes in science for that scientific inquiry. We are moving along with the curriculum into a new curriculum with a more inquiry-based and the class sizes are starting to creep up there also. World languages, we have limited technology there because our seventh grade world languages are again roaming on a cart. They don't have a home base to support some of the technology that we could be supporting. We know with the K-12 world languages that we're looking at in the district that our exploratory could change. But as it is right now, those teachers are moving. And we did add a teacher this year to help with our class sizes, to bring that down. The arts, our band, choir and orchestra, our music wing is too small. As I said, orchestra spends two periods in the cafeteria. Next year, as our first class moves through and becomes eighth graders, our eighth grade band is large. We would like to split them into two, have a one-three-five band and a two-four-six band on alternating day schedules. We're not going to be allowed to do that because orchestra needs to have the band room because we don't have the cafeteria option at that time. There's going to be 375 students in there eating lunch at that time. So we're going to have too many eighth graders in there for band and we're going to have the orchestra utilized in that room. So there, the square footage of that room is, needs improvement. Also, the band storage is inadequate. The numbers that we have involved in band are great and marvelous and we want to see more. But that means more instruments. That means a bigger space to store those instruments and a more secure space to store those instruments. They're not cheap and we should be protecting them. And there's really no room for expansion down there. I mean, you can't make any of the rooms bigger. So without, it wouldn't be cost-effective. Certainly you could do it, I'm sure someone could engineer it, but it wouldn't be a wise move. Our general music room is our keyboarding. Right now, our keyboards are outdated. We can't find anyone to refurbish them anymore. So as they go, they go. We don't have enough now as they're going to supply a full classroom set. That is on our agenda to take care of, but it is outdated and it really can no longer be repaired. Art classes are at capacity. And as you know, when you're working with art, whether you're doing the sculpture or the drawing, you know, you need room to work. Our kiln area needs remodeling to be as functional as we need it to be with the number of students that are involved with our pottery and our ceramics and our sculpture. The other content areas, family and consumer science. We currently have six workstations in our family consumer science room that is designed for four students per station, that's 24 students. When our numbers exceed 24, which they certainly do, that means that there's students at each workstation not participating, not actively engaged in the lesson, standing back and watching others instead of being interactive. And that is not certainly what we want. It makes supervision a bigger challenge. And as I said, it's, right now it's inadequate. There are technologies out there for family consumer science that we would love to bring in and integrate, there's just not space to support that. Technology education, we have the two tech bedrooms, one the wood shop, one the electronics room. The electronics room with our concurrent graphic design in our engineering and technology cannot support some of the things that we'd like to investigate, such as robotics, such as other forms of drafting and engineering. Our wood shop, of course, is limited in numbers. You can only have so many kids working in the stations and so it limits opportunities for kids to get in there and get busy. They're sitting back and waiting their turn. Computer education, we do have a hardwired computer education classroom. It is very small for 30 kids. We do have 30 computers in there, they are shoulder to shoulder, they are on top of each other. And the teacher feedback is limited because of the lack of size. We have one wired computer lab available for our staff, for all of our kids. We do have four mobile call labs. Each call lab is only 15 computers. So if a class wants a call lab, they're going to need two. So right now, we need more technology, we need more access to those things. Business education, again, teacher on a cart, room to room. The geography teacher will be moving from classroom to classroom. Our special education classes, we have a few of them in spaces that just weren't designed for a classroom. We have a special education program in the old teacher lounge, which is completely undersized and inappropriate. I shouldn't say inappropriate, not as effective as it could be. We have a special education classroom in a old conference room slash storage room in the media center, which takes away from the media center and provides them with a space that could be improved. It's just, we have some inadequate space needs. Our autism program, it should have several components that more space would help with. The gifted and talented program is growing along with our enrollment and that means that we have an increased need for space for the gifted and talented program. Currently, they are in a, what we call a corridor room up in the Merlin House. It was a small room designed for small group instruction when that floor was put on, when that addition was put on. And with the numbers that they have now in the GT program, when they want to do group activities such as the book clubs, they're squeezing kids in there. It's, so we need more space there. We need greater access to technology for the GT program. We are, we have begun really looking into some really great ways to enhance our students' education in the middle school with the GT program. And we're going to continue to go down those roads, but to continue to go down those roads, we're going to need to get at the technology that allows us to do that. Physical education and health, again, we've been there, but we need more teaching stations. We need bigger locker rooms. Our locker rooms are woefully inadequate. Supervision is difficult. We have put the lockers so high that, you know, you can't see the kids. There's not enough lockers. We have great participation in after-school activities, whether it be volleyball, football, track and field, basketball. And they need space. Those kids need space for their equipment, for their after-school needs and so we don't have enough lockers. We don't have enough locker room space. There's no classroom for any of the instructional components of physical education. So that would be something that would be nice. And all health teachers, all five health teachers we have in the building, move from room to room to room. I think that's it, any questions?
Thanks Jim, any questions, comments?
Just a few questions, I guess, and I appreciate the length and time you did to put this together. Small item, back in general music, you talked about keyboards and the fact that they're so old we can't get parts to replace them and that's creating fewer keyboards for more kids. Is that a space issue Jim, or is that just a need to buy more keyboards or update?
Well, it's both, it's both. Right now, it's a space issue with fitting 30 keyboards into that room. And then another issue is that we need to get 30 keyboards. But yes, it is certainly both. We don't have enough room in there to put the keyboards that we need in.
Okay. And you know, this is a big, this is a big list. I mean, there's a lot of items here.
Certainly.
And I'm wondering if you've talked about going through or gone through a process of identifying priority in terms of what's most important right now because we don't have a permanent solution at this point. And I know you've done a number of things in the school to make adjustments and so forth. But have you gone through it and said, these are the most important things because this goes to the heart of the concept of what we're trying to do at the middle school? And the other, some of the other things can wait and are they all just?
No, certainly we prioritize. I think we've already made some steps in some areas that we have prioritized. Let's say it's adding an exploratory teacher to help with class sizes there, adding the additional science teacher and the additional world studies teacher. But they're Band-Aids that really, and I'll keep going back to it, that begin to tear apart what we truly believe in, which is the house concept. So yeah, we do prioritize and we have some things we see in the future that we can do, but we need space.
Right.
Tom, just to add to that, with Jim's comments, the prioritization has been to add teachers. We've seen the middle school numbers in classrooms creeping up. And so we've made the decision that that was the most important thing to do. And as a result, we've brought those to you and you've supported that and that's helped reduce the number of students in classrooms. But to accommodate that, the middle school has had to say, well, that's the most important. So now the program itself and where those rooms are located, the classrooms are located, they've been creative in trying to accommodate those teachers. And so that's where the priority has been.
Okay, I appreciate it. The last just thought I've got is, you know, it seems like there's two things, two pressures here. One is enrollment, numbers of kids. And the other one is methodology, changing on how we, how we teach, the introduction of technology, all those things that probably weren't as present maybe 14 years ago. So where, you know, where's the greater pressure? Is it capacity or is it the change of, the change of how we go about teaching kids?
Well, I think certainly the greatest pressure would be the capacity, but we would be remiss not to continue to focus on the opportunities out there that our kids are missing on by not having the space to support some of those technologies that are out there. So certainly we're going to worry about capacity and instruction and delivery and student learning, but you know, we're in this because we love it. And we're going to continue to keep our eye on the ball and look for ways to continue to improve.
Brian?
So, excuse me, from the technology standpoint, just, I'm not trying to be obtuse, just trying to understand. So going back to, do we have a space issue or do we just need to get more technology? What's, you know, if we had another two or three racks of laptops that, you know, we could bring to classrooms, would that fix some of the tech? Because we kept, you meant, we mentioned the technology stuff a whole bunch of times. Would that help solve that problem? There's a wireless network in the, on the middle school, right?
Right, you know, that certainly would be nice. But I think when we talk about technology, we're talking about some of the more advanced technologies that are out there, such as some of the technological sewing that you can have for the family consumer science, some of the robotics for the engineering and technology. You know, there's a lot of things out there and I wish I could speak more eloquently on them, but you know, when teachers come down and talk about it, they need to store some of these technological pieces in places and so it comes down to space. When we mentioned technology- When we mention technology here, we're talking about the space to support those technologies. Computer, we'll take more computers anytime you want. But I mean, I think what we're really looking for is the space to bring in some of the more advanced stuff. That isn't just a laptop.
Yep. Yep.
Topic that kept coming up in your report also was storage. Have we looked at using outdoor storage, storage like in pods or anything like that?
We have, we have. We've looked at, we've looked at that. We have, we are currently doing some storage space outside for maintenance equipment, for some of our athletic gear, high jump pits, track gear, which will free up some storage for our FIED department. But when we talk about storage for the general houses, you know, we have looked at the idea of pods. We have not decided to go that route yet. We have filled every nook and cranny. We're not going out the windows and doors yet.
You know, storage by itself just sounds like you could put it anyplace. But it has to be accessible. And so we have talked about bringing in a trailer and using it onsite for storage. And yet we still have to solve the problem of accessibility. So it's kind of a, you have different kinds of storage, but that's part of the answer as well.
Well, any other board member, questions, comments? Jim, you did a good job. I thought you went through all of these pieces in good detail. We certainly have a better understanding of some of the space issues you're dealing with. It sounds like you're, you know, doing your best to try to, you know, deal with the situation at all the different levels. So certainly appreciate you and your colleagues and staff's efforts to deal with this issue until we find a longer-term solution.
I just want to make a correlation between this report and looking at program and curriculum and then Sandy's report about our achievement and learning of our students. And certainly, these two interact together. And so as we look at raising the bar for ourselves and moving more of our students into advanced, it is necessary, it is one of those requirements, is to have the necessary space, certainly the teaching tools. And, you know, the middle school has been doing a great job of making those accommodations and being very creative, both the administration and the teachers, and flexible with the space. But there is, there comes a time when you reach that threshold, that you're beyond, that you really can't do much more. And so we can add more students into the classroom, but we don't increase how much feedback each student receives from the teacher. We don't increase, in fact, we decrease the teacher's knowledge of where the student is individually. And as Sandy talked about, that's where we're going. And that's what really improves student learning. When we have assessment tied to standards and tied to feedback on student, quality student work. And at some point, the numbers in the classrooms and the space itself interact with all of that to minimize our ability to continue to improve learning for those students.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll move on to topics for action, consent items, personnel expenditures, award, bread bids. Somebody have wished to make a motion of the consent items along with a total dollar amount?
I would move approval of the consent items as listed personnel expenditures, award, bread bids.
Second?
We have a motion by Tom, a second by Lynn, a discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Item 10B, resolution authorizing issuance of awarding the sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Tim. And I believe this is an item that we've talked about in previous meetings, refinancing some of the bonds.
Right, that's correct. Past two prior finance committee meetings and especially this morning at the latest finance committee meeting. In front of you on a loose leaf is agenda item 10B. I'll call your attention to the colored folder, excuse me. And the latest information just came in. And this will be, these will be the final numbers for the refinancing of the block of bonds. And if you turn to the second page, you can see our summary, the issue summary, and the amount is five million, one eighty-five. We will actually close on July twenty-fifth with action, approving action tonight. And the maturities are from April first, two thousand nine through two thousand twelve. Our, the good news is our Moody's rating is, has remained at AA two, which is one of, still one of the highest in the state amongst school districts. And the average interest rate on this refinancing is three point three five percent. And then there's some information on the refunded issue. And you can see, if you look at the very bottom, the total savings is going to be two hundred twenty-three thousand, forty-two dollars. So that will be a reduction in our debt service levy of two hundred twenty-three thousand, forty-two dollars. If you turn to the next page, page three, just gives a chart, a table that shows the issues before refunding. And the refunding issues are the issues on the left-hand side marked in yellow. And that's a total of five million, nine fifty-five. And then if you go across, read across to the right-hand side, it shows the new issues after refunding. And again, you'll see if you go all the way down to the right-hand column, the debt service savings is two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars. And then the next piece is the official resolution. And that will be approved tonight. And if you look down at the bottom, it does, it does give the terms of the bonds on the first page of that official resolution down at the very bottom. It does give interest rates of three percent, four percent. But these bonds will be sold with a premium of a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So the effective interest rate, the coupon interest rates are three and four percent. But the effective interest rates will be anywhere ranging from two point one five up into the three, roughly three point, I think, three point five, three point six percent. And that is all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? If not, we'll entertain a motion. And I believe we should read the title of the resolution.
Yes.
Provision, okay. Brian?
Mr. President. Sorry about that. Mr. President moved to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of five million, one hundred eighty-five thousand general obligation refunding bonds, providing the form of the bonds and levying a tax in connection thereof.
Okay, we have a motion by Brian.
Second?
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Tim. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The item C, enrollment-driven, oh eight, oh nine staffing additions, Nancy?
Okay. Ultimately, through this report, I'll be asking, and the Personnel Committee is recommending that you approve on page thirty-four, three positions, a point two zero FTE elementary learning disabilities teacher, point one oh FTE teacher for gifted and talented, and a seven and a half hour per day, one hundred and eighty-two day special education assistant. But in order to get there, we looked at a great deal of data. And we have been following the enrollment data very closely this year because of the opening of the new school, because of the balancing of the enrollments in the remaining five schools and the boundary changes. And actually, we've been doing monthly updates of the enrollments. And the Personnel Committee, Lynn Robson and Mark Kaiser Schad, also Tim Erickson, we went over all of this data just this week. I guess I'll first of all tell you, I looked at, and these are absolutely unofficial numbers, but they're the best, the best look at the current registration we can achieve, correcting any errors. In many cases, actually doing many telephone calls to find out if, and confirm that students would be returning or that they would be withdrawing. So we, we have, I think we're confident with where we're at right now. But it is, as always, a point in time. It changes daily. Looking first, and I'll say just very briefly, the, without going into any of the specific data unless you have questions, the Hudson Middle School and the Hudson High School, looking at the registrations, reflecting on last spring, this spring, just a few months ago, when you approved staffing for the following school year, we are recommending no additional staffing at this time for the Hudson Middle School or the Hudson High School. I couldn't help but think when Jim Delune was speaking, you know, our eyes are on the class size guidelines for all levels. And we're looking very closely at that. But it isn't all about that, particularly at the middle and the high school. And it would be true to some extent also at the elementary. It is about space, the design of that space, the equipment needs. And as Mr. Holland mentioned, the particular delivery of the instruction. So we, within that context, you know, having heard some of the concerns that Mr. Delune just expressed, we still feel that we are, for now, at this point in time, that we are appropriately staffed for next year at the middle school and the high school. If we, on page thirty-five of your board material, looking now at elementary, and I'll come to that in just a second, going back to December, December eleventh board meeting, when the administration brought forward the preliminary elementary school attendance boundary proposal, we projected a need for a hundred and thirteen regular classroom teachers. Last year, beginning of the year and throughout the year, we had a hundred and eight elementary classroom teachers. And so we were projecting seven, is it seven more, six more? Five more?
Five more.
Five more, thank you. Please keep track of this.
Math.
Keep track of the math here. Okay, so we were, we were projecting five more, that rearranging staff, opening the new building, considering growth up to that point. When we came back in January, of course, some of the numbers had also changed, the enrollment figures. And the boundary adoption ultimately provided us with the approval for up to one hundred and seventeen regular classroom teachers. We have, in February, we had completed at that point in time the transfer and reassignment of staff. And we had also given consideration to boundary exceptions, approving many of those, but not all of those boundary exceptions requests, which did change the balance to some extent. So at that point in time, we had placed or hired a hundred and thirteen elementary teachers. And as of this very last review that we've just completed, we are now in the process of hiring the additional four. Okay? And if you look now at page thirty-five, I'll tell you where. On page thirty-five, we have, we are in the process of, right now, hiring an additional teacher at the kindergarten level for Rivercrest. We are, that kindergarten will, kindergarten will be, go from four sections to five sections of kindergarten in order for us to stay within the class size guidelines. And those are reflected at the bottom of that page. Eighteen to twenty-two are the class size guidelines actually for kindergarten first and second. And so the registrations were numerous enough that in adding the fifth, we were able to lower and stay within those class size guidelines. So at the kindergarten level, it'll be between eighteen and nineteen students in kindergarten at Rivercrest. Looking at second grade, all over the district, all over the districts, we've got lots of second graders and lots of second graders in each of our buildings. And so we are in the process of hiring right now an additional second grade teacher at EP Rock, going from three to four sections. And with that addition of a teacher, there will be eighteen to nineteen children in those classrooms, again, within our class size guidelines. Similarly, Willow River, we are, again, in the process of hiring a fourth teacher there. They now have three and we're going to four sections. So that the classrooms will have an average of eighteen students. And so the fourth then would be fourth grade at Rivercrest. By adding an additional section going from three to four, we will now have between twenty-one and twenty-two students in those classrooms. The guidelines for the intermediate levels, three, four, and five, are twenty-two to twenty-seven. The other grade levels at the particular buildings that are shaded in your document are the, the grade levels at the particular schools that we will be continuing to monitor. Because they are, they are, with the exception of Holton at two sections of twenty-three, just one over, not sufficient to add at this point. But the others are either one under or just at the class size, the upper class size guidelines. So we will be looking very closely again at those enrollments. And in some cases, we'll be recalling parents and trying to verify those numbers. This will go through the Personnel Committee in August. So at this point in time, we have, we've exhausted the one hundred and seventeen that we anticipated that you approved back, back when you adopted the boundary changes. And we're holding. So we are not tonight recommending, at least at this point in time, any additional elementary positions. The positions we are recommending though, and they're due to growth, are on your page, what'd I say, thirty-two, thirty? Thirty-four, okay, page thirty-four. I'm working from a different, different sheet here. The twenty percent FTE elementary learning disabilities teacher, K five. This teacher serves kindergarten through grade five. You actually had approved for the staffing just a few months ago, an eighty percent position. This position is at Rivercrest. And since then, we have increased from seven students to eleven. And among those students, again, they're K five. It's a big spread of kids that the program accommodates and will accommodate. There are several students with multiple disabilities. So, and we do follow some DPI guidelines relative to recommending staffing. The second one is a ten, ten percent or point ten FTE teacher for gifted and talented. Part of the staffing, again, just a couple of months ago, was thirty percent at Rivercrest, and it's up to forty percent. And those numbers have increased from ten to seventeen. and it's up to forty percent, and those numbers have increased from ten to seventeen. And among those, thirteen of the seventeen are students that require some degree of direct service, have Level One or Level Two plans. And both of those are recommended for district funding, the first eight thousand dollar estimated additional salary, and the second four thousand for a total of twelve thousand additional salary out of district funds. The final one is recommended to be a hundred percent grant funded, new student, unanticipated, came with a plan, came with the need for an educational assistant in order to deliver an appropriate program, reviewed by our IEP team and confirmed. So that's, that's where we're at with that. I, I do want to tell you too, the kindergarten numbers, you were perhaps interested in those. Superintendent Bowen Eggbroten reported in May, I think it was, let's see, what did you have there?
Three hundred and seventy.
Three hundred and seventy, and we now have three hundred and eighty-three kindergarten students registered. So that number has gone up.
Any questions for Nancy? Good report, Nancy, it certainly sounds like, you know, you did your research to make sure that we added no more, no less than what was needed. And, you know, when you look at the, the average class sizes certainly indicates that new school is warranted.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're already starting to fill up the, the brand-new Rivercrest school before it's opened. Any questions, comments, board members?
Mr. President, I'd like to echo my compliments to Nancy for the work. I want to go back to the one hundred and seventeen teachers that were approved by this board, and then thinking about the, the budget that we're, we're going to be, you know, passing in September, a little concerned that one hundred and seventeen teacher approval standing, that's the standing approval, and with the numbers that I'm seeing here, you know, in classes as compared to the class size guidelines, if that's going to be enough teachers that we might want to consider looking at adding more teacher expenditure potential, you know, for the, for the possibility, maybe probability, that there'll be added more students this fall than there is, than we're anticipating right now. So I, I guess I'm just maybe suggesting that the Finance Committee might consider that as a work on the budget.
A contingency?
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Tom. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the, the staffing additions.
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Nancy. If you want to continue on with Student Services Leadership Plan?
Yes, this is the two thousand eight, two thousand nine Leadership Plan for Student Services, and this was also a topic of consideration by the Personnel Committee, and the Personnel Committee endorses this particular plan. A few months ago, Barb Rapun resigned her position as Director of Student Services, and we posted that position, we recruited, we interviewed, and we reached a point a short time ago where we were unable to fill this very important district leadership position in time for the two thousand eight, oh-nine school year. Although we're recommending an alternative plan just for next year, we are confident that we will be filling this position with a highly qualified candidate a year from now. And then in the meantime, this is the plan for your consideration. Barbara has, is willing to continue as Director of Student Services at sixty percent. Amy Hamburg, principal of EP Rock Elementary, is willing and more than interested, actually, in assuming some additional duties as the K-12 ELL Coordinator for ESL students, English as a Second Language students. She has experience and background in that type of programming and is interested in doing it. And thirdly, we will, would propose to recruit internally a special education teacher or a student services professional for a one-year full-time special assignment. The job description is primarily focused on non-administrative special education duties. This is like a teacher or staff on special assignment. It's not an administrative position, and the job description is not designed that way. But we have, we have some very, very competent and, and somewhat veteran people within the system who we hope and think will be interested in being considered for this. They would simply move over from that, the position they currently hold, just for one year. They would maintain their current salary, which is already budgeted, current benefits, and we would employ a long-term substitute for that position. So the leadership team would consist of Barbara, still as the Director of Student Services, still performing those administrative functions, Amy Hamburg coordinating with, linking with Barbara to oversee the, the K-12 English language learners, and then, and someone from our current staff, either a special education teacher or a school psychologist, et cetera, who would then come into this team and oversee other duties. We have a, a, what they call a self-assessment through the Department of Public Instruction coming up next year. It's a very large and tedious process, and this person would facilitate that process, would coordinate a team of people and would oversee the collection of the data and the analysis of it, and of course, reporting, reporting to Barbara. The, the cost of the plan is estimated to be within the amount budgeted for the hundred percent position of the Director of Student Services. So we're, we, we feel we have a strong plan, a plan that can be implemented and will be, can be strongly implemented, and it is cost efficient. And then we will look forward in the following year to filling the position a hundred percent with a Director of Student Services.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. So the end result is we have this, with all these different individuals, it rounds out this complete position and the needs of the position? Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing here? Personnel Committee's reviewed it? It's okay? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval unless there's questions.
So moved.
Motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Nancy. Okay. Proposed lunch pricing, oh-eight, oh-nine, Tim?
Again, in your loose leaf, Agenda Item 10E, you'll see a memo from Peggy Eller, who was the coordinator for Child Nutrition Services. Peggy and I have reviewed the preliminary budget for food service this year, and in doing so, are looking at proposing a ten cent price increase for the lunch program. The reason, of course, is we've seen a, we've seen a spike up in food prices across the board, most notably, if you look down at the bottom, milk and bread increased about twenty-five percent. Our CPI is standing at about four point five, we've got some increased labor costs, and then fuel surcharges on cases of food just are exacerbating our increase to operate food service. And so we do want to keep food service healthy and make sure that we don't run into a problem where we're running a deficit operation and then having to increase prices by, by spiking prices up in a future year. So this, this is approximately a six and a half percent increase from last year. Peggy did also review information, we did review information from other schools, and Peggy has noted that eighty percent of forty schools from Minnesota and Wisconsin that were contacted are proposing a ten percent or more increase in meals. We did see several that were looking at a twenty-five cent price increase. In our CISA, we're still, our pricing, as it sits here with the ten cents, still puts us, we're still lower than many other schools. So we feel the, the price increase is, is pretty modest based on all of the pressures that are happening right now. So we would ask for your approval of this ten cent price increase.
Okay, any questions for Tim? Tim, on the fresh fruit and veg snack, the NA not available?
Right.
Then we're proposing a price, so we don't really know what the difference is?
Well, that, the reason is that that's a brand-new program.
Oh, okay.
From, that was recommended before, and so the cost for that this year is fifty cents.
Okay, good. I'll entertain a motion for approval of this price increase for nutrition services?
So moved.
Motion by Barb.
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. The next item on the agenda is the budget goals. Brian?
So the budget goals were in your additions to the board package, 10F. I'm not going to read to you, but just hit the highlights. So we had to realize going into this budget year, one of the big, big things facing us is the sixth school to help us with overcrowding, that's going to come with an operational cost and staff, transportation, you know, programmings and some operational costs. The good thing is because it's a lead school, the ongoing operational costs, you know, could be up to about thirty percent more, thirty percent less than a nutritional school. So, so other than that, the assumptions for the, for our goals are, their district valuation is at a minimum of three percent, and that state aid, which is an important part of our budget revenue, is at twenty-five million dollars. So given those assumptions, here's what we would like to do, here's our recommendations from the Finance Committee, is that, that we continue to provide a high-quality education, and we align with the strategic plan of 2025, that we support the learning, the operational facility needs of a growing district, that we open staff and operate Rivercrest Elementary School, and then we are fiscally responsible to communities owners by striving to continue to levy under the revenue cap, have actual expenditures for the year within two percent of budgeted expenditures, and then maintain the district's commitment to fund the annual post-retirement contribution. So those are the goals, are there any questions on those from anyone on the board?
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the, these established oh-eight, oh-nine budget goals.
I would approve the, I would make a motion to approve the budget goals for oh-eight, oh-nine.
Okay. Motion from Tom.
Second.
Second from Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thanks, Brian. We'll move on to committee reports. Lynn with the Personnel Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Negotiations Committee met on July first. The board committee members are Mark Kaiser-Schott as the chairperson and me. The administrative team advisors are Mary Bowen Eggbroten, Nancy Sweet, and Tim Erickson. The meeting began with the adoption of the committee commission. The purpose of the committee is to represent the Board of Education at the governance and policy level to guide short and long-term planning of the personnel needs to support the advancement of student learning, programming, and the work of the district with respect to HSD 2025. We also discussed, as Nancy indicated, the two thousand eight, two thousand nine staffing recommendations, which included the addition of one twenty percent learning disabilities, FTE learning disabilities teacher, and a ten percent FTE gifted and talented program addition. We also discussed the hiring of an OT assistant at a hundred percent, whose services have previously been contracted for in the past, and talked about actually hiring that person and elected to continue our existing contract relationship, mainly due to concerns about eliminating long-term liability with respect to potential unemployment and benefits. The committee also discussed, as reviewed by Nancy tonight, the plan for the two thousand eight, two thousand nine Student Services, and then the committee adjourned to closed session to discuss a personnel issue.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? Okay. If not, Tom, Facilities and Grounds Committee?
The Facilities and Grounds Committee met on June 25th. Those present were myself as the chairperson, Mark Kaiser-Schott, and Lynn Robson. The administrative advisors present that evening were Tim Erickson and Jim Staskel. We had five agenda items, the first being the update on the Rivercrest construction. And I'm happy to report, and as we discussed, as Jim reported that evening, the school is on schedule and on budget, and scheduled to be substantially completed, as he put it, by August 4th, which will give, I think, the staff some time to move in, get settled, things like that, to be ready to open doors by day one of school. The second agenda item was the middle school athletic complex that Tim updated us on. Two items there, one was, one is completed, the storage facility, kind of storage dual concession and, 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 storage, storage and concession. And it's located just off of the, the middle school football field, it's a football field.
Multi-use field.
Multi-use, okay. There's also scheduled for lighting of the field, which is scheduled to be installed July 14th, at an eighty-five thousand dollar cost, of which half is going to be supplied by the local booster club. So proud of that and that partnership, and appreciate their participation. Third agenda item was energy management planning that Tim discussed regarding reducing plug loads in our schools, and he outlined a plan, beginning in oh-eight, oh-nine, for reduction of personal usage staff plugins, to be phased out, in a sense, over a period of years, so that we will be completely without those personal plugins by 2012. Just, it's, it's a cost savings measure, an efficiency measure, and will give us some time to, to work it in. Mary wants to say something?
I just want to clarify one part of that. Certainly in our schools right now, middle school and high school, and some of our existing schools, we really don't have the capacity to have common areas for staff schools, we really don't have the capacity to have common areas for staff to have access, like to a coffee maker and so forth. So, we have, each of the plans will be by building, and it won't be full elimination until we can supply those areas where we can, they can have access to common appliances.
Thank you. The fourth agenda item was regarding the great 6 to 12 space for learning and planning. And there's one item that we have before the Board tonight for action in that, and that's the physical plant assessment. I'd like to go to that last, if that's all right? The other item that we talked about under that, that agenda item, was architectural support for decision-making. Anything that we discuss in the future in terms of expansion, or renovation, or remodeling, things like that, as it relates to the current schools we have, such as the middle school, high school, so forth, may, should require, and we're anticipating will require some professional look at it to determine costs and feasibilities, things like that. So, just kind of giving the Board a heads-up in this situation, that we're not, we're going to be considering hiring an architect to give us some, some information, some, that'll help us with decisions in the future, just by no means an indication that we're moving towards a referendum. The last item before I get to the item for action is regarding the Cooley Trail and County Road F speed limits, of which we've been discussing with four really different entities about the, the recommendation that we've had to reduce the speed limits along County Road F, which is currently 45 miles per hour, to a consistent, permanent 35 mile an hour speed limit. County Road F goes, runs in front of the new Rivercrest Elementary School. Cooley Trail runs behind it, and then meets up with County Road F. That currently, that current speed limit is 55 miles an hour. And again, we're, we've been requesting and working with, again, four different entities, which are the Town of Troy, the City of Hudson, the County, and the School District, that's So, after a lot of work, particularly by Tim, which we appreciate, and with the city, and we've appreciated the work of the city, and the fact that they've been very cooperative with us, as well as Troy and the County and so forth, the city has determined to allow for their, their portion of the road on F, a, a blinking sign reducing the speed limit from 45 on F to 35 during the beginning and the, beginning of the school day and at the end of the school day. So, from 7:30 in the morning until 9:30 in the morning, and then from 3 o'clock in the afternoon to 5 o'clock in the afternoon, there'll be a lighted blinking sign reducing the, the speed limit to 35 during those times of the day. The, the, the Town of Troy is not permitted to reduce it by more than 10 miles an hour from 55 to 35 on Cooley Trail, so they have requested from the County to submit a letter to the DOT to do so, and that's underway right now. The County has since this morning now approved the same proposal from the city for the blinking lights on the remainder of County Road F. County Road F principally that runs in front of the school is under the jurisdiction of the County, but there is a portion of County Road F from basically Cooley Trail to, towards the city, that's under the jurisdiction of the city. So, you can see multiple entities and lots of fun. So, so, any questions regarding that information, all that?
Tom, is there going to be a, a stoplight at an intersection of Cooley and F?
There's a stop sign.
Right, a stop sign, but no, no plans for a stoplight, no.
On Cooley.
On Cooley.
But not on F.
Okay, not on F.
Yeah, that, the portion that Tom was referring to, under city control or under city jurisdiction is, there's a short piece of Carmichael as it can, as it runs into F. Then also, approximately from Tower Road on Cooley Trail to F is also city jurisdiction, so two small sections with the city.
And our request to the city and the county in Troy was looking at vehicular traffic, you know, parent traffic to the site and bus traffic to the site, and really not looking at student walkers and, and those bicycling, biking to the site. We are going to be busing everyone in the Rivercrest attendance area and certainly encouraging them to ride the bus, and strongly discouraging any kind of other kind of transportation, because we believe this area is hazardous because of, there are no walking paths or any way for students to get to the school safely on bikes or walking. So, we were really looking at how to make the traffic as safe as possible during the school day.
The last item for you tonight is an action item under physical plant assessments, and the, within the context of that, the discussion is around, as we consider solutions for capacity issues and so forth, we have to understand, I think, the feasibilities of, of expansion in the high school or in the middle school, remodeling. In addition to that, I think we need to understand what efficiencies we are, we have are lacking. And we particularly believe that there are probably some, some serious cost savings that we could, we could benefit from in the high school. We talked about how to go about this. We, we discussed if Jim should be the, Jim Staskel, or I guess our properties engineer, I'm not sure I have his title correct, but would be the, could be the primary lead on that. But really, due to time and also expertise and so forth, I think it would serve the district better if we considered a professional firm that could actually do a, a pretty thorough study around, again, feasibility of expansion of buildings, of remodeling of buildings, of efficiency of equipment, things like that. And so, the, the, the Committee is recommending tonight to this Board that we allow staff to solicit RFPs to the appropriate number of, of contractors to do this work and to itemize it, to first of all, give us a quote on the, on the work required and our work that could be done, that we would direct for the high school, and then, secondly, the middle school. So, you know, we're particularly interested in the high school at this point, and, but would also like to get a, a price on the middle school.
We can move forward with a request for proposal based on the recommendation from the Committee. We would need to bring this back as an action item with the, the, the firm that we are recommending to you in August as an action item. But I think it's more informational to the Board that the Committee is authorize us to move forward with asking for proposals, and then we will bring that back to the Committee and to the Board in August.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
That's it.
Any questions for Tom? Sounds like your Committee's staying pretty busy.
Oh, yeah.
We'll move on to the Finance Committee. Brian?
Thanks, Dan. So, the Finance Committee met this morning at 7:00 AM, covered four topics. One of them is the Committee Commission, which is in your additions to the Board Package 11C. Is there any questions on that? Then we moved on to the budget goals we just, we just, we just approved, the school age care costs, we reviewed that and planned for that. And then finally, talking about the refinancing of the general obligation bonds. I just want to hit this one just, I know Tim's already covered it. First of all, great job, Tim, on that. Second of all, you know, we just saved the district $223,000, really based off of our Moody's Tax Rating, which was AA2. And it's just of interest, when you, when they, when they do a reinsurance of a bond, they, they basically have an analyst do a interview, I think it was with you, Tim, right?
Right, it was with myself. Myself and Brian Brewer are consultants on the project.
They, they basically do an interview, and then they publish it. And so, and that's right here in the, in the information that Tim provided tonight. I would encourage you all to read, read that. It's pretty interesting. The reason we have a good, we have one of the best bond ratings in the state, which allowed us to basically do a bond at three-point, the average, the average would be 3.4, I think it was?
3.35.
No, it's right here. 3.35.
3.35, right.
So, and the key thing to that was, one, it was our, ours proximity to, to Twin Cities, right? But the second of all was our, of our strong fiscal operations, and they specifically noted that, you know, because we're, we have a formal policy to have a fund balance at 25 to 30 percent of our operating, of our operating expenditures, that those kind of conservative, fiscally conservative measures have helped keep our rating where it is. Because the rating was so high, we enjoyed the, basically, the ability to refinance. So, I think that's something that we should be proud of the district, and nice work to you, Tim, on managing that. So, that was it.
Okay, thanks, Brian. And, and just follow up to the, the bond refinancing, that's, that's an ongoing part of the Finance Committee, along with Brian Brewer, our consultant, that we've used several times in the past, and he's provided us some, I guess, alerted us of some opportunities that we have to refinance the bond. So, that has been an ongoing interest and, and thing that we strive to do. Well, that completes the Committee Reports. I don't have any citizens' requests to speak, so, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, parent one, parent F, for the purpose of preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems and investigation of charges against an employee. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Brian.
Second.
A second by Lynn. We'll have a roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Turner, aye.
Bell, aye.
Ben, Luna, aye.
Motion's approved. Thanks, everyone.